All right, good afternoon, everyone. We are here for a work session for Lake Wells Charter System. And we are here to talk about the renewal of applications for four of our schools. They are Janie Howard Wilson Elementary, Polk Avenue Elementary, Edward Bach Academy, Lake Wells High School. Two of the renewals are for five years, two of the renewals are for 10 years. The five-year renewals are Janie Howard Wilson and Polk Avenue Elementary. The 10-year renewals are for Edward Bach Academy and Lake Wells High School. And at this time, I would like to provide the board an opportunity to speak with each of these principals, with Janie Howard Wilson first, on their renewal and application for another five-year charter.
Good afternoon, everyone. The snapshot that was given to you was simply that, it's a snapshot. Ms. Gray does have the actual applications in front of her that we will be asking later in the board session to be signed. And I'm happy to answer any questions following the snapshot. It was broken down into four sections that we had to answer, so that is how I designed the snapshot. The first one was reviewing the charter over the course, and it asked if the program was academically a success. I did have to state that due to some inconsistent student performance over the last five years, that that was a struggle for Janie Howard Wilson. So in doing so, I wanted to go ahead and have a plan in place for how are we going to move forward? And with that, that would be the IB PYP program. We also are going to use other data points to track academic progress. When we were looking at doing our charter, we went ahead and looked at our iStation data. And when you actually look in the full document, you will see that it was showing a higher projection than what we actually scored on the FSA. And so we did make some changes with that this year. We will not be using that program anymore, and we'll be moving towards i-ready. We also hired some instructional coaches for reading. We were given the UNICEF grant, so we'll be hiring another reading coach, so that will bring us up to two reading coaches, two reading interventionists, and a math interventionist. And we are also opening up a lot of professional development. And I really want to thank my teachers, because they have had immense professional development. And I do know that it has taken a lot of their planning time, but I do feel like it's in the step in the right direction. We went ahead and asked for our teachers to join committees, and so that way we can hear their voice and value their opinions, and build a lead literacy team. So last year, we had Mary and Melissa, they were our state regional literacy directors, and they came and they worked with the leadership team, but the teachers didn't have a lot of input. So we want to make sure that was included in our plan, because we value our teachers, we want to hear their perspectives. We're very excited, we had a very high return rate this upcoming year, and so 90% of our teachers are now certified. That is huge for Janie Howard Wilson. We also had a big student increase. Right now, our numbers are sitting at 437. So very, very excited to continue to see that going. You'll see a little graph off to the left-hand side of the paper, and you'll see that the blue color is our ELA data over the course of the past few years of the charter. And you can see that the red data is our learning gains with English Language Arts, and the yellow is our bottom learning gains. The green section is the math, and the orange is the math learning gains, and the pink is the bottom 25%. So that shows the snapshot of the inconsistency with the data. Is there any questions with Section 1? Moving on, Section 2 of the charter renewal. Janie Howard Wilson has always operated within the terms of the charter with no spending deficits, and we had no audit findings. We were very responsible with our ESE funds, and we have a robust and viable foundation account, and that we've been compliant with maintaining our general fund balance of at least 5%. Our student enrollment has been increasing since last year, and I did state that we already had the 437 this year. We went ahead and we have spent the summer learning PYP. I want to thank my teachers again, they came in the summer to do that. And then we also started the year off with three days of PYP planning. We really want to go ahead and do a big push for student agency. We want them to have different approaches to learning, part of the IB philosophy, and we want to go ahead and drive data, drives our lesson planning. Marzano will be a tool that the administrators use to go ahead and evaluate the work that's being produced, and to go ahead and target specific professional development needs. We're also going to get consistent feedback with the state regional literacy directors and the IB consultants, and we want to continue to build partnerships with the community. Any questions with Section 2? Okay, for Section 3, it asks if we are faithful to the terms of the charter. And we were faithful when we were complying with our financial accountability as established by our audits with our accounting firm. We maintain the operations of the building in conjunction with Polk County Schools, and we are involved with any of the Lake Wells Charter Schools or Polk County Schools, meeting their expectations set forth by the boards. We were inconsistent with the student expectations of the charter, and that's why we set forth with the plan for the PYP and the IB. And we wanted to go ahead and ensure that we're doing quality work, so we're going to continue to rely on our consultant and our regional directors for literacy. We're going to continue to do a big push for ELL certification with our endorsements. And we did make a big push last year with ESE, so we are now fully compliant with that. We went ahead and expanded our ESE program this past year to include the resource model, so we have a full-fledged model with ESE. And we went ahead and included, we'll be including math with MTSS this year, as we've done a big push last year to put that into our school schedule. And finally, we did a really big push with safety, and we had additional cameras installed, and we hired a full-time guardian, that is outside the classroom. Any questions with Section 3? For Section 4, it asked what are our plans if our charter is renewed? And as you can see in my other three sections, we really want to emphasize the PYP mission and vision statement. We want to go ahead and make sure that, starting next year, our fifth graders have an exhibition event that shows what they were learned from the IB program. We want to invite the community into that. We want to make sure that our students are leading with student agency, and they're able to go ahead and show their IB learner attributes and decrease our discipline. Our staffing plan, we're adding more teachers to meet our enrollment needs, so we just hired two more teachers due to having an abundance of students, we're projected to hit 415. And then we're going to be doing more with the Universal Design of Learning with fiddlers. And we'll continue to work with Polk County Schools with building facilities.
City board members have any questions about Janie Howard Wilson? Thank you. Next up is Polk Avenue Elementary. They are up for a five-year renewal as well.
I just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Hicksonbaugh and the staff at Polk Avenue who have contributed, and also at the central office, those that contributed and helped pull some things that were needed for our renewal. Also, our community and stakeholders that helped with letters of support, those are greatly appreciated as we move forward in the five-year renewal process. So very similar to Ms. Griffiths, my document is kind of broken into the different sections. So academic success at Polk Avenue, I'm sorry that the font is a little small, but as you can see in those graphs, what they're showing is, prior to the global pandemic, Polk Avenue, many students would come in, our proficiency rate where they came in at third grade, by the time they left in fifth grade, they were closing achievement gaps. Polk Avenue typically has had great learning gains, so we know that we were working on closing that gap. Unfortunately, with, like, you know, nationwide, with that pandemic, we did see that decline and the effects of learning loss in our students. And so Polk Avenue is working on getting back full focus and moving forward as we move into the new state standards and the new state assessment. Curriculum-wise, we are with wonders. Polk Avenue, over the time of their charter, the curriculum had changed a little bit. So we are really excited about having a comprehensive K-5 ELA curriculum. We're in our second year of that. So we are excited to sort of see that through, and hopefully see the long-term gains of our whole staff working on the curriculum together. And also with Just Read Florida, Melissa and Mary, they also are a part of working with us at Polk Avenue, and with our literacy leadership team. We work with them to make sure that our ELA curriculum is where it needs to be. Are there any questions with Section 1? In Section 2, Polk Avenue has been financially stable over the past 10 years of its charter. Our current enrollment is down a little bit than last school year. Right now, we're at 532 students. We're hoping, similar to last year, we did see a slight increase in our enrollment right after the Labor Day holiday. So that could be migrant families that are coming into Polk, back to Polk Avenue. So we are kind of looking and seeing what things will look like after this next week, if we'll see that same pattern. Currently, we do have three students on the waitlist for third grade, but we also have to be very mindful of our class size, but we are working with those families. Most likely, we are able to accommodate families on our waitlist. So hopefully, it will be a quick turnaround for those families and get them in. You can see the historical data of our enrollment there. And then on the backside of that page, the professional, our staff at Polk Avenue, this is just a list of some of the professional developments that they were able to participate in during the last charter, and then things that we've already started working on. The Polk Avenue staff, there has been some turnover, most of the turnover at Polk Avenue has been due to a new position within the Lake Wells Charter School system, which, you know, keeping good people in our system, moving out of the area of retirement. So at the core and the heart of Polk Avenue, a lot of the times the staff come, they fall in love with our students and our families, and they are staying at Polk Avenue. So that is a great thing with Polk Avenue and the community that we have there. Our staff is working on getting their ESOL endorsements and their reading endorsements completed with the state of Florida. I am happy to say that Polk Avenue has a full-time librarian that is certified. It's been a couple of years we have had a pair running our library, but we're excited that we have a librarian, and some new books, so it's great to promote that. Polk Avenue, last year, we also hired a reading coach, so we have, this will be her second year as our reading coach. There was a little lag of time at Polk Avenue where they did not have a reading coach, so it's great that we were able to bring that back. Let me see. Any questions on Section 2? All right, Section 3, Polk Avenue has been committed to seeing increase in science, reading, and math. We've also been committed to building student leaders. We do participate in Franklin Covey's Leader in Me program, based on the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, with Stephen Covey as the author of that. And there is a leadership model for schools. Polk Avenue began that during the current charter we're in. They started that, I think, 2010, and then in 2018, 19 school year, they received their Lighthouse certification, which means that we have shown the program leader in me and their philosophy, how we follow through with that, and we create leadership roles for our students. Our students can track their goals and talk about where they want to get to, their track, and we are committed to working with our students and our families to help them meet their educational goals. We are in compliance with ELL, ESE, mental health, all of those items. I will say, Polk Avenue, we have an outstanding ESE team. I'm so grateful for them. Ms. Fletcher and her team, they do a phenomenal job supporting our families and our students, ensuring everyone's getting the time that they need. We also were able to hire a full-time ESOL teacher, which was a great addition for Polk Avenue. We have a fairly high ELL population, so having a full-time teacher on staff has assisted us, and again, meeting the needs of those students. The full-time social work for mental health, and the support with Marsha Rose in the charter office, so we are in compliance in all of those areas. Any questions on Section 3? Section 4, moving forward, there are some things that we are going to change, and I think system-wide. You know, we had been using NWEA maps, I will say, for progress monitoring last year. That was projecting our third graders to be 46% proficient. When they took the FSA, the scores came back at 30% proficient. So I think, you know, making a shift to start reading and seeing if we can find some progress monitoring tools that are more on track will definitely help us in making those predictions, and making sure that we are supporting our students in the areas that are needed. As a Leader in Me school, we weren't going to move forward with that. We are up for our Lighthouse recertification with Leader in Me August of 2023, so we'll work with them on that renewal. We are planning on doing a lot of studying of John Hattie's work. John Hattie's Ten Mind Frames is one of the books that we will be doing a book study on. Robert Marzano's work, and with our teacher-focused model. We have an outstanding math and science coach, who also, with a reading coach, support our teachers, support our students. They are pushing in, they're doing pull-out groups, they're doing tutoring. Our science teacher was just featured in the Lake Wells lead, Ms. Kelly, with her work with our STEM lab, getting hands-on experience for kids and for our students is a really important part of their learning process, and providing them with opportunities that they may not otherwise have. And so Polk Avenue is going to continue to supply and provide those opportunities for our students. And I think the heart of Polk Avenue, we are building a team at Polk Avenue, the winds are shifting. We have new standards, we have new curriculum, I am a new face at Polk Avenue. And we, I just feel like we are coming together, and we want to do great things for our students, we know that their families are counting on us, and we are looking forward to the future. And I welcome that in five years, we get to do this again, and show them what we were able to complete, and what we were able to do for the students of the Lake Wells community. Thank you. Any question? Thank you.
Ever W. Bach Academy North, they're up for a 10-year renewal.
Good afternoon. I'm here to just talk about a school that I love, and so I think that just talking about it is going to be easy for me. The paper that you have in front of you is a narrative, and the narrative will show that this school, even though it's been in inception, now going into its fifth year, has really been able to do some wonderful things, even though we've been in some pretty sticky situations. When I speak of that, I speak of that lightly, because I do know, as you can see, that the charter school system, they started out, speaking of this school, very mindfully, even though it may not seem like it was mindfully, it was mindfully. It was mindfully because they thought of the finances. The school started out thinking financially, we may not be able to build a place right now, but let's partner with someone, and let's begin our school. So that they did, and they began the school at First Baptist Church. From those beginnings, and being a startup school, they were able to save a lot of money, and looking forward to purchasing of a building two years after that. Within that, within the second year, they partnered with the First Presbyterian Church, where they were able to do a build-out of four classrooms, but it also afforded the school to have a place for the students, to have a gymnasium and other things that were required. We started out with a curriculum, a very robust curriculum, I must say, and then we found out that parts of it did not work. The math portion of it, we had to change, and so we then began to use algebra nation. And so from that, if you can look on the, on the second page on the back, you'll see the demographics. And what I want you to pay close attention to is this, even though the school was put in a situation of teachers teaching, two teachers in a classroom, students doubled up, not 25, but 44 in some cases, you can see that in the first year, the students at sixth grade scored very high. When those students moved over to seventh grade, you can begin to see that there was a short decline. Well, that comes because now you have two grade levels, and now you have all cells in place. The first year, there were only five cells that the students were tested, because you only had sixth grade. Seventh grade brought on the nine cells, which were what you see there. If you look for proficiency levels, you'll see that over the course of time, even though we were in a pandemic, a global pandemic, and we were working outside of the school, sometimes some students at the school, some students not at the school, the school was still able to perform. You can see that the proficiency levels went up. We went up about 11% across the board. Then if you pay close attention, though, we are very intentional about what we do. We have Mindful Mondays, where we meet and we talk about all of the student data. We did see that there were three subgroups that did not meet proficiency. Those subgroups were our African-Americans, they were our Hispanics, and they were our ELL students. Those students did not meet proficiency. And so what have we put in place? Thanks to our grant writers, and thanks to the board, and thanks to Al Ricky Smith for saying yes when I asked for people to come on board, to help and assist with that. And so then we were able to hire someone specifically for ESOL, and then also to bring on more people for our ESE students. In the beginning, we did not have that. And so those students, even though that they were being serviced, they were being serviced by Gen Ed teachers, not to say, but a person who goes to school for a specific certification, they will do a better job. And so I attribute that too, to our teachers in those areas, and making sure that they're looking at those IEPs, but yet, given the services that they were needing. So in that, on that first 1A, you'll see that we have met, because that's what it asked all throughout, have we met the challenges of our charter? Our charter is specific to making sure that we pay close attention to reading, but we pay close attention to reading, math, science, and social science. And you'll see that across the board as you look in 21, 22, at the proficiencies, you'll see that our civics EOC is scored at a 70%. The year before that, it was 58% proficiency. So we're really, really doing a wonderful job there. I can also see that our lowest 25% in math went from 19% proficiency to a 42% proficiency level. So the thing is, if we can do this in the space that we're in, what wonderful things that we'll do once we're really in a space that is more traditional. The next section talks about our budget. Is the school solvent in finances? We have had internal audits, we have had auditors come from outside, and yes, we are very solvent. Why? Because we take, again, we're very intentional about how we spend our money and what we do. We do a lot of grant writing in the school to offset things, so that we don't have to touch our budget. Again, with the school that's a startup, as we know, there's a lot of things that you have to do on your own. And so things that we can do, curriculum that we can write, and make sure that we're using research-based sources, then we do that. We do use Marzano's research-based strategies. We also use LSI research-based strategies. And now, thank you, Kim, for embarking on PYP, because now we are embarking on NYPD candidacy, and thank you so much to the high school for helping to push us forward. And with that, we have began to implement our new learner profiles, which gives the students a different pedagogical vocabulary that they have to be able to use. But what we did, we took it and we mashed it up with what we've had in place, because again, we don't want to overwork the teachers. We want to make sure that everything that we do is aligned, and so we've made sure that we've gone through those learner profiles and matched them. In our current finances, we do have a loan that's out there, because we are building, as you know, a 20-classroom complex, and we are also renovating a historic cafeteria, which is another reason why we are asking for a 10-year charter renewal. With bills to pay, we really don't want to see us go, and we are making those strides The other is talking about, are we faithful to our charter? We have been very faithful to the charter. Another part of our charter is that our school gives enrollment, enrollment opportunities, basically to anyone who wants to sign up. However, the students who get the first seats are our students from Lake Wells. And if you look at our demographics, you'll see that. We do open up the enrollment period to everyone, however, we do give a three-week extended for those parents that live in Lake Wells to respond. Once those parents in Lake Wells have responded, we do reach out to the ones that have not to make sure, have they made a decision as to where they would want their child to be. So in that regard, we have met our response for the charter. We do have enrollment that exceeds what our charter states. Our charter states that we'll have 600 students, that means 200 students per year for three years. We have exceeded that in the, in the application process. And I can only give kudos to the teachers who are on the staff, not myself, because all I tell them is this, let the work speak. We do not go out and try to recruit, we let the work speak. And because the work is speaking, then we're getting those applications coming in. We are also building a culture that is safe, an environment where the students feel safe. It's an open environment where they can come in and speak with me, they can come in and speak with their teachers about anything. We have had a mantra before our superintendent came, which was, we have an open-door policy. And we know to do what we know is right, even though we think no one is watching, always someone is watching. And now, we not only say that, but we also say what comes from our superintendent. If you have a problem, if you think you're going to have a problem, if you think somebody has a problem with you, come on down to the office and let us solve it. And because we have that open relationship, we've been able to build a great relationship with this community. We have received grants from the Mountain Lake Foundation, we've received grants through the Polk County Schools, and we've also received grants outside of the state of Florida. And so again, with these things that we have going on, how do we plan to continue if we receive this renewal? Well, we just plan to continue to do what we're doing, and to continue to build what we're building. And that is, students that are risk-takers, students that are culturally sound, students that are academically sound, not so much the student who's always going to go to college, but we're building a foundation where students who want to pursue vocational aspirations, they can do that on our campus. Right now, we have a fabrication lab, a fabrication lab that encompasses robotics, it encompasses photography, I had to think for a second, encompasses photography, it also encompasses 3D model-making, architecting design, anything that you can dream of in this fabrication lab, from making shirts for you, to also making tags for you. So that will be an entrepreneurship for the school, so that it can bring money in for itself. And then this one is close to my heart, is very dear, is culinary. Why? Because we also brought in agri-science, and everything that we do on our campus is cross and inter-curriculum. That means that what is taught in one content area spills over to another. We do not teach our contents as separate entities. Why? Because the world is not made that way. And so when we have culinary arts, we will have food to table. Our students will be able to go out to our agricultural science farm, and they'll be able to bring foods in, in order to have in our kitchens. And so that is another reason why we are asking for a 10-year renewal at Bach Academy North. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Lake Wells High School, asking for a 10-year charter renewal.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here. Our first question was, is this an academic, is the program an academic success? Lake Wells High School had set out a goal to cross the 90% graduation rate. We started out at 70%, and so absolutely, the graphs over there show that for each of those five years, our graduation rate has been higher than both Polk County Schools, as well as the state of Florida, and that's the average for both of them. And we've, 16, 17, we were at 87%, and we've been above the 90% mark ever since, including after the pandemic. The second table on the same page talks about our components of the school grade, and what I want to focus on is the fact that from 2015, 16, to 2018, 19, we made 127-point gain overall. One year of disruption. One year of disruptions uh worldwide, we lost a hundred and thirty-eight points. What I'm extremely proud of, of both the staff at Lake Wells High School and our students, that this past year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we recovered eighty-six of those points. And we were three points away from being a B for the third year. Um, so two years of B, and then we had a a learning loss after COVID, but we recovered eighty-six of those one thirty-eight points. Uh, I have no doubt that we're going to go back to where we were and perhaps be an A school moving forward. We were also recognized uh by the uh US News for being one of the best high schools in the US. And uh they they actually get data on twenty-four thousand schools nationwide, and they ranked eighteen thousand of them. And in that ranking of eighteen thousand schools, uh Lake Wells High School was six thousand three twenty-two. So we are clearly in the top one-third of schools in the entire country. The top three schools in Polk County were McHale, Lakeland, and Lake Wells High School. McHale does include uh the middle school data, so the only two pure high schools were Lakeland and Lake Wells High School. And Lake Wells High School is the only Title I school. So again, that's something that goes on to show that the program has been really good and it's been a success uh for our students. Uh, in the other report where we break down everything by subgroups, um, it is evident that our graduation rate, everyone has gone along, whether it's our lower socioeconomic groups, it's our ESE population, uh students with disability, they had a ninety-five percent graduation rate. Uh, and the same with any of the other subgroups. Any questions so far uh on section one? For section two, is the school a viable organization? Uh, and the way we responded to that, and thanks to Mr. Smith for providing the write-up on the financials for that. Um, we we need to maintain a five percent fund balance. Uh, we've been at seven percent, and the projection is for sixteen percent. And uh we've had audit reports all through the years, and all of our financial audits have been clean. Uh, the other way to look at it is also the fact that we started out eleven, twelve with eleven eighty students. Um, and this year, we're at fifteen, ninety. So it's not really us, it's the work that is being seen by the community. And as a school of choice, there is clearly a trend for more and more people choosing to be at Lake Wells. Our waitlist has also been growing in the same at the same time. And though that's not in front of you right now, I'm looking at the numbers in front of me. Uh, last year, we had seventy-five students on the waitlist. And uh before that, we had sixty-one and a hundred and one, and those numbers have been growing. We currently have a waitlist as well. Um, so that concludes the conversation about um is the school a viable organization? The third section talks about, is the school faithful to the terms of the charter? And also the document that we are providing uh today, it clearly shows a clear pattern for uh making incremental improve improvements over the last decade. And in looking at those improvements, we focused on every individual subgroup. There may be some subgroups, uh three in fact, that we need more work on. But overall, out of all of the subgroups, uh the performance has been on the on the upswing for the last decade. We look at our school improvement plans, and uh we set out goals each year. And sixty-seven percent of the goals have been met on our school improvement plans. Uh, that again goes to show uh that the program is viable and we've been faithful to our charter. Section four talks about if the charter is renewed, what will be we focusing on? So one of the components in the school grade formula is a column for uh acceleration points. And that we noticed, um, we're at forty-four percent last year, and and that is lower than many of the some of the schools around here. And one way to increase that is to increase our dual enrollment options. So we are working with both Polk State and Warner University to increase those options. Uh, Dr. Ergentola and I have had several conversations on making sure that we will even have some uh dual enrollment on campus, and so that is something that is going to be done in the near future. We also hired a multi-tiered system support or an MTSS coordinator. And that is to make sure that we can provide tier-two and tier-three support throughout our school. And that's going to help with our test scores in all areas for ELA, uh math, English reading, uh science, so studies. So that is also going into effect this school year. Uh, thanks to CARE funding, we were able to add Paper, which is a twenty-four-seven online tutoring program. We do have a high ELL population, and the beauty of the program is that they offer tutoring in both English and Spanish. So for many of our students, that's extremely helpful, um, if they can get tutoring into languages uh in all subject areas. We're also looking at expanding our um journalism and multimedia academy, and we'll be able to offer Adobe certifications in visual design and professional and video design. Uh, so those would be over the next couple of years. And uh with all of that, and the career academies are offering more certifications, we are looking into the International Black Laureate Career Certificate Program. So just like the diploma program, the IBCC program is more focused on students who are in the academies. And uh they take two other Ivy classes along with their career certificate, and they can enroll in that. And that's going to be beneficial for them for university admissions uh down the line. And the last two bullet points over there talk about uh just working with Dr. Rudolph, which is initiative on identifying employability skills for us for our students. And um they've been conducting a hundred and two interviews with individuals who work in seventeen different career pathways. And eventually, our goal is to look at what those pathways are and how do we incorporate that learning uh within the high school before they graduate and they move on to college, or they go move on to the workforce, uh or whatever they may choose to do beyond high school. So that kind of summarizes our plan for the renewal. Are there any questions? Thank you.
And boy, just as a commentary, uh these guys have worked through the weekend now for about three consecutive weeks where they've worked through the weekend, they've posed questions, they've done a lot of additional research and uh worked really hard to make this happen for the uh Lake Wells Charter System. And I just want to say thank you to all of them, thank you to all the staff, thank you to everyone who wrote letters. Uh, community members were involved in this, and so we're just really proud of the work that they've done. And we're looking forward to getting these renewals behind us so that we can move on with uh turning this place into a uh uh even better op- option for our children here. And any questions from the board members?
I didn't have a question. I was going to say the same thing. I know uh I had received a couple of phone calls over the weekends of things and and I know that uh I wanted to thank y'all for your hard work, as y'all did put a lot of hours in putting that together. So thank you for your labor and your love for doing that.
Item three, City of Lake Wells trustee position. Uh, there's a discussion by the board on that?
Yeah, I'll head that up. And it's actually more of a uh notifying than discussion at this point. Uh, trustee Daniel Williams resigned from the board due to time constraints. Um, you know, for board members that have served on here, this is a very time-consuming and labor-intensive role, and and I understand, and I I respect him for looking at that and seeing that he wasn't going to be able to fulfill his obligation in a manner that he felt necessary. So he did resign. I have talked with the mayor, and the mayor's in the process of making a new appointment. And I'm told that I should, we should have the new appointment by the next board meeting, so.
It says here, discussion. This involving the uh city was my bright idea at the very beginning. And uh as we were forming this charter school, you see in the uh district, you know, here come the trucks, here comes the workforce, here comes all this subsidiary support stuff. And all we had was uh uh schools, nothing, uh none, none like that. So I look out and I see the city, I see the trucks, I see the workforce, I see the playgrounds, I see uh schools are closed in the summer and uh the the uh recreational possibilities. And um and I thought it would be uh kind of a natural to work together. Didn't happen. It's just a mystery to me, but it just didn't happen. And you hear um, you know, the three little words, you you have three little words in romance. I have three little words in government and education. And my little three, three little words are, it's what works. That's what I look at. And if it doesn't work, then move on. And I just uh uh wanted to make the comment that, and and you know, I was responsible for it, the intent was good, but I don't think it's worked. And uh the bylaws are up to us, and whether that position is provided to the school, to the uh city uh is uh up to us. And unless I I just, I just haven't, it just hadn't fulfilled the idealistic dream that I had. And uh so when they said discussion, I've thought maybe we would talk about whether we even have it. And uh I think it's, at this point, with the position vacant, at least the board ought to discuss that, whether they feel like it's something that works.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, I want to, to to your comment, I know you felt like it hasn't worked out to the level of your expectations of what you thought the role would be. But I think from a relationship standpoint with the city, um, I think it, I think it weighs in heavily. So, uh, you know, from the level that you expected to where it is, I I I agree that that's probably not the same. But from a relationship standpoint with the City of Lake Wells, I think it's a viable role, in my opinion. But I'll I'll open the floor up to any other trustees.
Well, good, one other comment. I I envisioned that the city would select someone from the community that was, say, a retired principal or something like that. The city has, with, I think, one exception, the city has uh taken somebody off the city commission to fill that role. And uh so uh.
That was my argument with the mayor, that that needs to be not be a commissioner, that it needs to be someone the city appoints.
And, good point, and I think our bylaws could be in control of that. We're the ones that uh offer the the uh invitation, and we can set the qualifications. And uh it, last time I saw kind of some politics being involved, and I think that would take the politics out of it. Uh, and pick someone from the community, this school, the uh city, pick somebody from the community who had educational credentials and uh would have a rapport with the city and the schools, so, okay.
Oh, you're fine. One last comment. Um, it's going to take some work on your part because the city uh charter, how it's set up, I talked to the city attorney, and he said that that would require a referendum to change it on the city's side.
That is for the?
For the selection.
Yeah, for the selection.
Yes.
Uh, because this time, what they did was say, it was, had been up to our bylaws. But this time, they say, well, if the city's going to make the selection, we got to go according to what the charter says. And so that changed, and uh then it got a little more political. Um, so uh maybe it's time to discuss. I think it'd be a good idea to have a feel from the board as to whether we continue it. And I certainly respect uh your views on that. Uh, I've always thought a relationship with the city would be, should be positive. Uh, and then, if we are going to have it, what would be the uh mechanics of it?
I'll open it up, trustees.
Um, I've got a few things to say, kind of on the same line of what both of you said. I think it's important that we have the city involved from a relationship standpoint, just as a goodwill and let them have input. I think our bylaws do, it doesn't have to be a commissioner in our bylaws, it can be somebody from the city. And I think it's important that we let the the mayor and the commission know that, that they don't have to pick somebody that's on the commission. Not that the commissioners couldn't do a good job, but like Danny said, this is a a time-intensive volunteer effort that we all take a part in, and it's really important that you be, I think, that board members be engaged and, you know, to the, I'm not an educator, but if they've got education experience, I think that's helpful. And 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 be a team player, you don't want it to, you know, end up being political, so to say. But I I think that, I think it's important that we keep the relationship with the city, but you know, make it, let them know that they definitely don't ha- I mean, they don't have to appoint a commissioner because, I mean, you all are busy. And having another board to serve on, I get it. And um it may be good for them to, you know, I don't know, how we sometimes will appoint like a nominating committee. You know, maybe they could appoint a nominating committee to have somebody make them a recommendation or something.
Well, along that line, what I'd suggest is, you know, it uh an amendment to our bylaws, to the fact that it would be a citizen and uh not a city commissioner. You know, uh, to be very frank, uh, in the last two, three years, all of a sudden, school board positions have become part of the national political discussion. And that's, hadn't happened before. And now, school board positions, political parties are endorsing nonpartisan candidates for school boards. So uh, and and this last go-round, there was these underlying political tones that were uh involved. And so one thing we might consider is uh adjusting our bylaws to uh where we say what the qualifications would be for that position.
Yep. Since this is a board decision, I want to hear from the other trustees.
Yeah, right.
Um, I kind of agree with what David said. I think in this last appointment, our mayor may have felt rushed to give us a new representative. So I like David's suggestion of having a nominating committee. And maybe us give more kind of a job description of what that person would be getting into. Because I know as one of the newer board members, I had no clue the time commitment that I was getting into. So I think if we could give the mayor more input on what that position involves and have a nominating committee just so they can make a better informed decision and not rush, just we have to fill this position on the charter board.
Okay. I want to be careful, though. I know it's a mayor appointment, so that is a mayor power. I don't want to take that away from the mayor because they have very few powers that, but um.
Doesn't the commission, the mayor appoints them in the?
No, it's a mayor appointment.
Is that in their bylaws?
Yeah.
Because our bylaws said that the city commission approves it.
Well, that, this time, when, when you had this uh push-pull thing going on, for the first time, the question came, well, uh, you know, you got the bylaws over here, and then you have the uh appointment with the mayor. And the appointment, the mayor's uh governed by our ordinances. I don't think it goes as far as the, no, it does go to the charter, does go to the charter. And um, so I think it's going to kind of be up to this board as to what the qualifications might be or some sort of boundaries for the mayor to operate within.
I, I think it's also important that we, as board members, aren't telling the city who to appoint. Because then you come back to this argument that, oh, you all just make your own board. And that, I mean, that's not the case, but that, some people say that. I think it's important that we're not the ones telling the mayor to do. But maybe it's worth a conversation with the mayor to say, hey, we're at a point now, we're not in any rush to have a new board member. Right now, would it, in, in conver, because we want it to be a partnership with the city, would it be worth sitting down with the mayor or somebody and saying, hey, here's kind of our thoughts. What do you think? Do, you know, should we put in something where there's a nominating committee that helps you appoint somebody, whether it be a commissioner or someone from the city? But I don't know that you'd want to completely say it can't be a city commissioner because there may be somebody that's completely qualified.
Doesn't have to be a commissioner.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be. And I, it doesn't have to be right now.
That's where it is now.
And, you know, maybe it's worth having that discussion instead of just appointing somebody right away, having a disc, since we're in this point right now, it's worth, you know, maybe talking to the mayor about. Because I don't, I wouldn't want to just make a decision here today that says, city, you got to do this.
To add to that, what I did with the mayor was, I explained to him the process of how the other seats are selected, how the SACS and PTOs put forth names. And then there's a nominee committee that reviews those, vets those, and then puts forward the nominee. To assist the mayor, I sent the mayor the packet from the last committee of all of the nominees that were brought forth by the PTOs and, and the SACS with the notes and the bios from that. So the mayor has that information of, of our last pool of candidates. So I'm taking from that, that the mayor's probably going to select from that pool rather than doing the legwork. So our last nominating committee has already vetted those and, and put forth viable nominees. So that's where we are now. So I don't think it's going to be a hasty selection. And I think it's going to come from the SAC and PTO nominees, which, that's what I understand.
I think, I think that's good. And maybe, maybe now's the time to put something in our bylaws that says how it is for the other boards, that that's how it is, that's how it's done. I don't know.
Well, I think you're going to get the best pool of candidates if it kind, if they come from the SAC and the PTOs.
Absolutely.
So, so that was my thought. That would help the mayor in selecting a, a candidate that's going to be.
That, that's kind of, I think, trustee, Danny, you kind of hit on it, what I was thinking. Because to me, it's just going to be a, a complicated situation where you, you don't kind of want one person dictating who's going to be on the board based on situations that's out in the community that's going on. I think that's something you certainly want to avoid. So possibly us as a board and the, the city kind of need to get on the same page as far as understanding standards, goals that we want as far as who's on the, the board. With the other pool of candidates that's already been vetted, I think that's, that's a smart way to go than just picking somebody out of the community because of whatever reason and saying, I think, you know, put them on the board. Just somebody that's vetted and, you know, that kind of stuff. But the question is, how do you, you know, kind of get, achieve that goal between both the city and the board to make sure you get somebody who's, you know, whether we're communicating, I think that's good if you're talking with the mayor and everybody's understanding the standards.
Well, I, I think, you know, it's going to start with us writing our portion of our bylaws, how we want that seat selected for the city. And I think we can do that through kind of the same process we're doing now with the other board seats. And it would just take writing it in, in our bylaws and, and the city, how, you know, they're going to write it in their bylaws and just make them jive. But I, you know, for, for a mayor to just come forward with a name that he knows is, he or she knows is going to be, you know, someone that's going to put forth the time, understand the education and everything. I mean, because it is very intensive timewise. I mean, you know, you know that. And commissioners are already serving on a couple of different boards in addition to their commission seats. So a commissioner, for them to take that role, is really taking on a big task.
And I've been in both seats.
Yeah. So you, yeah, so you know. So if, if, if we could, you know, if the consensus of the board is that we rewrite the process so that, you know, the, the seat is, has the pool of candidates that's brought forth the same way the other seats are brought forth, where the SACS and the PTOs put together a nomination pool. And then, you know, however, we decide to, to get that pool to the mayor for them to, to do that. Or if it's done through, you know, our committee to, to vet them and then provide the pool, you know, I'm, I'm open to any of those.
I think some sort of process like that is great, like what you're saying that they're doing this time. And I think it even helps to, it'll help the mayor because then that pressure is off of him to, you know, it's, it's just like when we have these committees that nominate somebody, the pressure's off of us. We're not having to select somebody, you know, so.
And anybody that's in the pool has already expressed an interest in the system. They've already been submitted by the PTO and SAC, so you've got the support of the schools. So that candidate is going to be more apt to put in the time and have the time because they know, they already know what's involved with it to a point of what's involved.
I, I have just a general question as far as the city, because it's a mayor appointment, right? The city, the commissioners vote and then the mayor? So the mayor just outright?
I can tell you what it is. You know, I happen to be both places.
Yeah.
So, and first, as to procedure, if the board is, would like a bylaws, I can work with the board on that. As far as discussing the issue with the mayor, I can't do that because of sunshine law. So it would be somebody from this board and logically, our chair or whoever he would appoint, would talk with the mayor about it. And then, and of course, I can talk with the city attorney about reconciling the issue with the charter and our bylaws. So just wanted you to know, there's, there's a limit as to what I can do.
So my, my question, though, goes back to, is that our intent as a board is to have the mayor appoint, I don't know the reasoning, versus all the, the input from all commissioners? And then have the mayor appoint whoever?
We, we don't have any control over that. That's in the charter. The mayor appoints and confirmed by city commissioners. So.
That's in the city charter.
That's in the city charter.
I look back at our bylaws and I think it says, we don't have control of how they do it, but ours says the board member selected by the city commission. But I think their procedure is this, the mayor selects them and it's approved by the commission. Something like that, so.
And our bylaws place no restrictions on the appointment. So now what we're talking about is the possibility of appointing from a pool that's created by the schools. And if you want to do that, I mean, or say, appoint a committee or somebody to deal with me, I'll come up with a draft of a proposed bylaws. That's normally the way it happens, but it's however the board wants to do it. I'm the lawyer for the board.
So, but if we as a board can kind of put parameters on how they can, I guess, how the candidate is picked, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't we be able to put parameters on whether the governor, I mean, the mayor points versus the commission voting? Couldn't that be in our bylaw? No?
It is our bylaws.
That's, that's, that's their, that's in their control. But what you got to understand is, once the mayor nominates a candidate or appoints a candidate for us, we have the right of approval or denial. So it still comes back to us.
Good point.
Is there any more discussion questions on that? Do the trustees, I mean, are you thinking that we need to move forward with kind of bylaw stuff? I mean, that sounds like the consensus of the board.
I think it'd be a, I think we should do it sort of like the pool system now that it, and, and put that in the bylaws.
Okay.
There's the chair.
Robin, can you draft us something?
Yeah.
And bring that to the next meeting for discussion?
Sure. And, and if you could alert the mayor that we're doing this so he doesn't jump the gun.
Or he can pick from the pool we have and then we can, we can make it for the next turn.
But if he hauls off and makes an appointment, then we haven't got our bylaws squared away yet. That's, that's all I'm thinking about.
That's all I have.
All right, guys. So we now have the superintendent's report. I am going to make that report in the regular board meeting. It's a very brief report. If I can add anything to the conversation that was just had as it relates to our organization, whomever is selected and by whatever means that that person is selected, I am going to work with that person and we're going to be successful as a system. I just want you to know that I'm very confident in our ability to build relationships. And this board serves as the checks and balances on any board member that may be selected, if any agenda's in place that wouldn't be representative of what this board stands for, which is the advancement of this charter system. And that's my commentary. And finally, Board of Trustees' Work Session Finance Meeting at four o'clock PM and Board of Trustees' Meeting at 5:30 PM, Monday, September 26, 2022, at the Lake Wells High School Auditorium. Is there any other business for the good of the cause? All right, our meeting stands adjourned.
All right, trustees, we're going to roll right into the regular meeting if everybody's okay with that. We'll call the meeting to order. Dr. Hall, are you going to lead us in invocation and pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon. Would you join me in prayer? Sovereign Lord, leaders of the Lake Wells Charter Schools, humble and quiet themselves before you and in so doing, honor you as the one whose guidance is essential to the success of their work and the well-being of our schools. There will be policies and procedures deliberated here, perhaps today and at other times, and opportunities before this board, though it may seem they are disguised as a never-ending series of problems that must be solved, but solved they shall be. Governing requires excellence in leadership and this group is clearly committed to exactly that. The beginning of a school year is a likely time for all involved to reestablish priorities. Everyone is key to the ongoing success of the charter. And I do not think there would be any disagreement that our top priority is our students and teachers. Our mission is about creating the teaching-learning environment where students and teachers can thrive and flourish. For our teachers, I pray that they would clearly see the potential and promise of their work. What might those children who are coming to their classes and observing their life and lessons do this year? You see the promise and potential in young lives. Those kids in the classroom today are world changers. One way or another, they will change this world. And these teachers have the opportunity to make it for the good and they are an open door for them. May our teachers come to appreciate that they are members of a fraternity to which they belong. They touch the future, they teach, and there is no higher calling on the face of the earth. I pray for insight and inspiration for our new superintendent and all his staff. I pray for wisdom and encouragement for our principals and assistant principals and all the staff of each school as they do the daily work of managing this enterprise. Now, Lord, the times are tough and the issues very complex. Wisdom, discernment, and guidance will be needed by this governing board in full measure. May they always appeal for and accept what you will provide. And now, Lord, would you bring these good people a sense of joy for the year unfolding? It should feel good to go to work at our schools every day. May the walls of our schools reverberate with the sights and sounds of laughter, life, and the love of learning. And I pray for these things in the name of the one who himself was called the master teacher, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Marie, do we have anybody scheduled to address the board? Dr. Rodoffich, Superintendent's Report.
Last week, I gave you a pretty extensive overview of everything that we've done. We slightly changed some of those numbers. I did produce a 100-goal plan for the board and for all of our employees here that I'm currently working on. I intend to give that to the board at the next board meeting. I'll probably give it to you in advance at the next board meeting so you'll be able to assess where we are as far as reaching some of those goals that we've set. So that will be what we're looking at. The really good week, really good month. I think everyone's worked very hard in this first month. We've been able to accomplish a lot since we've started. Our technology is all in order now. Students are very well-versed in the fact that we're going to be reading a lot here, a lot more than we've been reading. And, and some places are already reading a lot more than I was reading before I got here. So I'm learning that lesson quickly, working with my own four children who are in attendance in schools here. I just want to say again how much I appreciate the work that's been done by our principals and their staffs to complete the charter renewals that's before you tonight. And the biggest thing I want to emphasize is that I'll be getting that 100-goal report to you. I know that you're about to set our evaluations. And I want to make sure that you have a full measure of the work that we're already doing. And the last thing I'll say is that now that we're done with charter renewal, we'll be starting our strategic planning process, which will be district-wide. I'd love to have any input from board members about any big ideas that they have, that they want to see accomplished so that I can document that and then get it in the right place whenever it comes to that formatting of that plan. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rodoffich. During the work session, we were presented the charter renewal applications for four of our schools. At this point, I'll entertain a motion for approval. We'll go school by school. Jenny Howard Wilson Elementary's first.
I'll move for approval of Jenny Howard Wilson's application for renewal.
I have a, a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Polk Avenue Elementary.
I move to approve the Polk Avenue Elementary's renewal application.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a second by David. Any comments, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Edward W. Bach Academy North.
Move to approve Edward Bach Academy North application.
Move to approve Edward Bach Academy North application for renewal.
I have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any comments, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Lake Wells High School.
I move to approve the renewal for Lake Wells High School.
So I have a motion and a second for approval. Any comments, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Did you get the motions, Marie? Dr. Rodoffich, next meeting date?
Next meeting date? I'm sorry. Next meeting, uh, date, work session, finance meeting, four o'clock PM and Board of Trustees meeting at 5:30 PM, Monday, September 26, 2022, at the Lake Wells High School Auditorium.
I got one question about that. Is there any possibility we could meet in here? I like this environment so much better than I do the auditorium, but I'm just throwing that out there, y'all can talk about it.
Okay.
This is much more intimate, not as...
I'll have, I'll have to, I'll have to speak to the boss and edge. Can you let us know if we can use it or not?
Any person scheduled to address the board on non-agend items, Marie? Chairman's report, I just wanna reiterate what I said earlier about the teams working on your plans. Bravo, well done. Looking forward to getting that submitted and, and approval. Trustees, start from the far end.
I don't have anything. I just wanna reiterate the thanks that have already been said. As an educator, I know what goes into the start of a new school year and for you guys to tackle this like you did and just the phenomenal nature of your reports, just thank you for what you do on behalf of our students and my graduates for many of you, so thank you.
Again, just thank you to all the principals and all your teams that worked on these applications. I know it was a ton of work and y'all put in a ton of time. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other business for the good of the cause, trustees? Meeting adjourned.
Oh, thank you.